We're now going to go to nine point oh, and I'm going to read the instructions because there's some instructions. So if y'all will listen, Lexington County School District One's Board of Trustees solicits the advice and counsel of its citizens. To encourage this participation, the board provides a citizen's participation period during each of its regular monthly board meetings. In order to speak, you must be a student currently attending a Lexington District One school, the parent legal guardian of a student currently attending a Lexington District One school, or a taxpayer residing in the Lexington District One attendance area. You may comment on agenda items, school operations, policies, programs, and other matters. You may not speak about specific individuals, whether students or staff. And we want to remind you that this meeting is being live streamed. This part I really want y'all to hear, and that the recording of this meeting will be part of the public record in perpetuity. So I just ask when you, if you are going to talk about your own children, just remember that it is, it's live. It goes on the internet and it never goes away. So just keep that in mind when you, when you do discuss things going on at your homes. We want to give everyone who came tonight an opportunity to speak. And in order to do that, the board chair will call on each speaker by name and ask you to approach the lectern at the back of the room. The board will not reply to your remarks nor take any action during the board meeting in response to your comments or questions. This is your time to talk to us, so we're going to be listening. You may address the board for up to three minutes. You will have three minutes. Please do not clap or make any comments either while an individual speaks or after he or she finishes. As you came in tonight, you received a card to fill out if you indicated you wanted to speak. That card asks for your name, address, and other information. Is there anyone who wants to speak that did not fill out one of these and wants to speak? However, we will only read out your name and the town you reside in and the schools your children attend when it's your turn to speak. If you did not fill out a card but wish to speak, please hold up your hand and someone will give you a card. We already discussed that. Anyone who is uncomfortable addressing the board in person may reach out to the board by email, telephone, or mail. And our contact information is available on the Lexington One website. And we welcome all messages. And I just would like to take the time, since we're virtual, to thank all the people that have emailed us this past weekend. I want to thank all the teachers who used their voice and spoke to us and let us know their true feelings. And we did hear from a handful of parents, but we, we heard from numerous, numerous, numerous teachers. And we welcome that you felt, that you wanted to share those messages with us. So at this time, I am going to call on Ms. Meredith Tosh Candy. She is going to discuss returning five days face to face. She lives in Columbia and what, do you have a child in our district? Okay, she's a teacher. Where do you teach? Pillion High School? Well, great. Welcome. We're glad to have you. So go ahead, Ms. Tosh Candy.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Little for allowing me to speak today. I am a teacher here in Lexington One, and I am here to advocate for our teachers and staff. I know many parents are encouraging five-day return face to face. I will never criticize a parent for advocating what they believe is best for their child. That is their job as parents. However, my parents can't come here today to advocate for what's best for me. I have to advocate for myself and my colleagues, or no one else will. As a teacher, I want students back five days a week more than anything. Do you realize how difficult it is to teach orchestra virtually? But science, data, and research are telling us it is not safe to do so yet. And here are three names to prove that point. Ms. Demi Bannister, Coach Charles Peterson, and Mr. Wendell Smith. These are three educators in our state, two of which are from the Midlands, that have already lost their lives to COVID while serving in their schools. And this is just from the past week alone. None of their districts are back five days face to face, either hybrid or 100% virtual. And there have still been three deaths. Here is what Dr. Teresa Holmes, the Vice Chair of Richland Two School Board, said in response to the death of Ms. Bannister. How would you like it to be your family member that did not survive? I know people are wanting schools to be open. I know they're saying, oh, it's mostly survivable. But what if it was your loved one or one of your family members or your child? These deaths can be greatly reduced and avoided. Our current hybrid model protects the lives of faculty, staff, students, and families exponentially more than five days face to face when social distancing will become impossible. Our current hybrid model is working. We aren't seeing a huge spike in cases, and our students are still learning. Many of my students have expressed that they prefer the hybrid model because they are receiving more individualized instruction. This is not a race. My parents used to read Aesop's Fables to me, and one in particular comes to mind, the tortoise and the hare. Who won that race? Was it the swift hare or the patient tortoise? Slow and steady is the pace. Slow and steady wins the race. When a member of the Lexington One family dies, and I am intentionally saying when and not if, will the race to five days face to face have been worth it, worth the death of even one person? This is a case of prioritization. Is the greater priority being the hare and racing to face to face or being the tortoise? Taking things slow and steady to protect the lives, health, and well-being of our greatest resource, our faculty and staff. I please ask that you consider to retain the hybrid model for the foreseeable future for the safety and well-being of our faculty and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tosh Candy. Okay, we are now going to go. We are now going to go to Ms. Emily Homer Conrad. I'm sorry, I can't read it. Emily Homer Conrad. She lives in what, what town?
Lexington.
Okay, she lives in Lexington, sorry. And she has children at Pleasant Hill Middle and Pleasant Hill Elementary, and she is going to be discussing five-day face to face. So Ms. Homer Conrad, go ahead, please.
I first want to say that it's not that I don't believe that the virus is here. It is. I have, like I said, like she said, three children. I have one child in middle school and two at the elementary school, kindergartner and a first grader. This hybrid model has been proven before that it doesn't work. And the online model has been proven before by 2011 report done by the Center of Research and Educational Outcomes that was done in Pennsylvania charter schools proved that the children that did online learning were very far behind those that were in person, face to face. Now, I understand that there were recently teachers that had passed away. But those teachers were at schools that were online and had not gone face to face. I think that this virus is already predominant in our community everywhere. And yes, there are productive measures that we can take by wearing masks and such. And we have taught our children that since March when the pandemic started. But this going hybrid model leaves our children only in school two days out of a five-day week. And some weeks it's only one day, so they're not really learning. And it's shown that kindergartners and first graders can't learn by videos sent to them through PowerPoint slides. There's no way. We're going to leave a whole generation of children behind. And that generation of children is going to cause lifelong impact on not only our economy, but also on those of you that may rely on those children to help take care of our citizens. We cannot leave these children behind if we forget them in kindergarten, first grade years, and the elementary age years when it's most, it's most important for them to learn the basics of reading and writing and math that they have to learn face to face. And you just forget about them, then we're going to have a huge community at a loss. And not only will that affect our economy, that'll affect the economy of Lexington County because you're going to lose a lot of citizens if we don't bring it to the students back five days face to face. And you're also going to cause, you know, of parents, myself, I've lost a job because I have to home teach and, and also, you know, take care of kids now that I wasn't planning on before. The private schools are packed. We've called many parents who've tried to get our children into private schools because they're offering five-day face to face, but they don't have room now. And so now we're at a loss, and we're having to teach our own children, which we weren't planning on back when all this started last March. So that's one of the things that I wanted to say.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Homer Conrad. We appreciate you coming tonight. I'd like, like to call on Ms. Ashley Lewis. Is Hutton Lane in Lexington? Is Hutton Lane in Lexington? Ms. Lewis, is Hutton Lane in Lexington? It's in Lexington? Okay. She is Ashley Lewis. She is coming to us from Lexington. She has children at Lake Murray Elementary and at Beechwood Middle. So Ms. Lewis, and she's going to be discussing five days face to face.
Got it. Hello. First of all, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Again, my name is Ashley Lewis. I have a daughter in elementary school and a daughter in middle school. I'm here today for, for them to show them I will do whatever it takes to ensure their future and to demand they begin to receive the education they deserve and that we have all come to know and expect from Lexington School District One, the best district in the state. We are truly blessed to have such amazing schools and teachers in our community. With that being said, our kids need to get back to school five days a week, face to face. Lexington One administrators have had since March to figure out how to get students safely back in the classroom five days a week, just as other districts in our state have done and are doing, and yet here we are. Everyone is back at work. Daycare workers have been working five days a week throughout the entire pandemic, along with all essential workers. Parents have had to work five-plus days a week to pay bills and now extra childcare costs. Imagine what life must look like for single parents today. Because every day kids aren't in school, we have to pay someone to keep them. Parents have been paying and watching someone do the job schools are telling us they can't do since March. Meanwhile, our tax dollars are still going to schools, and district employees continue to receive their regular salaries for our children to receive less than half of their education in regular face-to-face instructional time. We know the numbers concerning this virus. We've all heard them. The sacrifices we're making and the repercussions this will have on our children do not reflect the risk. A quick Google search of documented transmission from student to teacher will yield little results. In the entire world, it is difficult to find a single case of this happening anywhere. That is because, and science confirms, that children are far less susceptible to this virus than adults. They are far less likely to contract and therefore far less likely to transmit COVID-19 than any other age demographic. Where is the outbreak at the daycares that have been open this whole time? Schools closed down and kids started going to daycare. As long as teachers and staff follow protocol, just as they've been doing and continue wearing their masks along with every single student in the school, it won't be an issue, just like it hasn't been for our daycares. Lastly, I've witnessed a lot of concern for the vulnerable and at-risk in our society, and I share those concerns with you, which is why I believe that those families with children or relatives in high-risk categories should be given the option to be 100% virtual. Let people decide what is best for their families. It's either 100% face-to-face or 100% virtual. But one foot in the door and one foot out the door simply isn't working and cannot continue. It is not sustainable, not for the hard-working members of our community and not for our children. It is time Lexington School District One recognizes the true victims of this new normal, and they are not the teachers, not the administrators, and not the members of this board. They are our children, your students, who are active, who you are actively depriving of structured socialization growth and equality education, who miss their friends, who just want to go back to school, who say virtual learning is hard. And we won't stop fighting until they get back because we are their parents and we know what's best for them. We will do whatever it takes to make our voices heard, even with masks on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Okay. I'm now going to call on Caitlin Barboza. And Caitlin is, is, I don't know what city she lives at either. None of you ladies live in a town.
Lexington.
Lexington. She lives in Lexington. She has a child at New Providence and one at Lexington Middle School, and she wants to talk about back to school face to face. Ms. Barboza?
So my name is Caitlin Barboza, and I'm here today to advocate for my family being in favor of five days face to face. I was told that parents wanting five days face to face were the minority and that we were just making our voices louder than the majority. I hope that today even my loud voice alone matters. This is just an original post from the Politics of Parenting.com, but it sums up better than anything I could have written on my own. I've talked to many, many parents from many different Facebook groups and multiple counties and districts who all feel the same way. Dear school administrators, board members, or decision-makers, it has been a couple of weeks of this virtual learning, and I'm here to tell you it is not working and we are not okay. I know you're doing the best you can. Most of us don't feel that you are because we don't feel heard, let alone doing the best that you can. Have you experienced virtual learning, like really sat in a home with families struggling to make this work? Have you witnessed the meltdowns of both students and parents? The fights and frustrations of not understanding the day's agenda or math lessons or technology failures? The onset depression kids are experiencing due to sitting all alone? Have you sat in the home of families of multiple kids only to see every child eat lunch alone, have recess alone, have snack alone? It's absolutely heartbreaking, and I feel held hostage in my own home. I cannot make my kids, who's calling me right now? I cannot make my kids take them on a bike ride or to the park or for recess on a picnic for lunch because every child has a unique schedule. Help me understand why all families are expected to be flexible with virtual learning, yet we cannot have a one-hour lunch break school-wide. If you have not witnessed this, then I beg you to stop telling us that you understand and start listening. Parents know what is best for our children, and we're going to fight to make things right. Children belong in school together every day. Virtual learning was supposed to be an option to families that felt unsafe reentering schools because this can remain an option live in person. Education is the only option for many of us, especially those with us full-time jobs. Parents are not meant to be the teachers, social workers, and principals in our own homes. Teachers are not supposed to work twice as hard to make half the difference with the same pay. Let that sink in, because if you truly feel that children are getting the same education virtually as they would in person, you do not deserve a seat on the board and should immediately be banned from working in the school education system. Stores are open, daycares are open, restaurants are open. The fact that schools remain closed is baffling. Are you aware that preschools are open? Little boys and girls who are absolutely adorable with their Paw Patrol mask. But I ask, have you been around many three- or four-year-olds lately? Because they are the most disgusting humans out there. Their sleeves are now Kleenexes. They'll pick gum off the bottom of a picnic table and chew it and then share it with a friend. They're gross, absolutely adorable, but gross. And yet they're in school and to your surprise, doing just fine. Great, actually. Preschoolers and daycare children are doing just great. If they can manage, I have faith that you would have confidence in our older children as well. Because regardless of your intentions with virtual learning, it's not working. And again, we are not okay. Families are not okay. We are not okay with watching our children's education progress, regress rather than improve. We are not okay hearing our kids calling themselves stupid when they do not understand something. We are not okay with our children with IEPs and 504 plans like mine who are not receiving their accommodations. We're not okay with our children losing social and emotional health over fear of a virus. Have you ever tried to teach a child how to hold a pencil properly on Zoom? No, it's not working. Do you realize that students have once left school crying each morning, absolutely hating their new normal? Put your political agendas aside. Let our personal physicians decide what is best for our health while you do your job and do what is best for your district. And in those final decisions, in your, if you're on the fence, just remember, we are not okay. Teachers are not okay. Lexington District One families are not okay. We are stronger together, five days face to face.
Thank you, Ms. Barboza. Okay, I'll now call on Brittany Little. And Brittany is a resident of Lexington, and she has a child at, at the Pleasant Hill School, Pleasant Hill Elementary, I think. So Brittany?
Hey, how are you? Okay, I don't have a speech planned today. This is just a story. This is my story. Let me start off and say that I moved into Lexington School District One for a reason. I spent $35,000 extra on my house for a reason. It was because of the school district. That was the reason. With that being said, I agree with what y'all say that, you know, virtual does work for some. Virtual does not work for all. The reason why is I'm a hairdresser. I spent $25,000 on my education to go to school. I work my butt off. I work 60 hours a week, five to six days a week, 10 to 12-hour days, eight to 10 clients a day. Don't wear a mask, although I understand the reason for the mask. With this being said, my situation is very unique because I, I make most of the money for my family. With this situation happening, I have a fourth grader, a kindergartner, and a one-year-old. I plan my kids out on purpose so that I would not have to pay for two kids in childcare. This is the reason why I did this. With this situation, it is forcing me to have to pay an extra $750 a month to pay for this extra child in childcare, which I am putting them through daycare because it will not work for me. The situation, thank God, my daycare does a 5K program, because if not, I would be completely, there's no way I could do it. Because with me not working those three extra days during the week, there's no way I could afford my car payment or my house payment or food to put on my table or anything else. So I am working the full five days. Thankfully, my, my daughter, my oldest daughter, is doing the virtual days with her father who lives in Fort Mill, which is also another issue. I'm having to drive my child on Sunday afternoons to Fort Mill and back on Tuesdays. So my child is being forced out of her home, which she has not ever been like that. She's been with me for nine years, which now she is being forced to be with her father, which is great. I mean, he's, you know, it's not an issue, but it's just, it's a situation where it's pulling her out of the home, and it's making it very difficult for me as a mother to, to do all of this together. Also, I got bullet points, but not a, not a speech. Thing that I don't understand is 100% of the parents send their kids to school every, you know, 100% of the parents that send their kids to school, they don't believe that COVID only exists on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday when they're sending their kids to school on Monday and Tuesday. It makes no sense. If you're going to send them two days, send them five days, because for the parents that can't do this, I can't, I can't afford it. I can't do this every, you know, I can't do this forever. I can't afford it. I'm pulling money out of savings left and right to be able to afford to put this kid in daycare. I feel like if you want to stay virtual, stay virtual. It, it works out. You know, you've got teachers that you're paying to do virtual, you do virtual. And then other students, you know, you go to school five days. It doesn't make sense to me. Also, with this being said, my fourth grader started a new school this year. She has come home crying because she cannot make friends because she is six-foot distancing between all of her classmates. She cannot talk to people. She can't socialize. She can't do anything because she's stuck six feet distancing with a mask on. It's making it very impossible for me as a mother to handle all of this as well as work and do everything together. So that being said, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Okay, I'm going to call on Alexis Skabinski. I think she is a repeat. We've had her before. And she lives, let's see, you live in Lexington, right? And she has a fifth grader and a first grader at New Providence. So Ms. Skabinski?
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me once again. I was here last month advocating for my son, both my children, who both have IEPs. And I'm here again to advocate that, or to say that a lot of my fears have come to fruition. There, this hybrid schedule is not working. It's not working for my social education children, and it's not working for us as a family unit. I'm a single mom. I work full-time, and I go to school full-time. And I can't drop out of school because I'm utilizing VA benefits to close the gap that I have with our bills. So I go to school full-time. I'm a mom full-time, a single mom full-time. And, excuse me. I'm working twice as hard to educate my children, something that this district should be responsible for. I got to my kid's daycare today, and my son had none of his assignments done. And I didn't know who to take that frustration out on. And I unfortunately took it out on my six-year-old. Why didn't you do your homework? But that's not his fault. It's not the daycare's fault. The daycare is not being paid to be a teacher. They're, for the most part, high school, the high school seniors or college students, they're not teachers, but we're expecting them to do the job of a teacher without the pay. And now I get to go home at 9:30 at night stressing, is my son going to be marked absent for today because we didn't have his assignments done? And as a first grader, we have an assignment for 17 minutes of writing. I mean, to me, that seems completely unrealistic, but I'm not a teacher. Our, our first grader is really sitting in front, in a classroom, writing for 17 minutes? My son can't even read a book. That's what his IEP is for. It's for reading intervention. So I'm at a loss as to what to do, and I'm really frustrated. My children need to be back in school a full five days, period. This two-days-a-week schedule is not working. And my children have been in daycare since June. Our daycares had one, one COVID-19 case. We shut down. And not a single other teacher or child tested positive for the virus, and everybody had to be tested before returning back to daycare. So I haven't found a single case in any, in any state in the country in which there was a daycare outbreak. If daycares are able to manage to stay open, I, I don't understand why Lexington One can't figure it out. I understand the complications with a middle and a high school, but that an elementary school with 20 kids in a classroom when their daycare has 40? There's no reason it shouldn't work out. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit off today. I'm just, I'm tired. I average four hours of sleep right now between my schoolwork, my children's schoolwork, and stress. You're really affecting this. I, I need my kids back in school.
Thank you, Ms. Skabinski. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on, is it Karis Pugh? Karis, is that the name? Okay, Karis Pugh. She lives in Lexington, and she has, let's see, oh, you've got all kinds here. You've got a first, a third, and there's maybe twins in fourth grade at Pleasant Hill Elementary?
Yes.
And you want to talk about the challenges of hybrid learning. So go ahead, Ms. Pugh.
I just want to start off by saying I appreciate you guys. I know that you have worked nonstop since this started, and I do appreciate it. Listening to this whole meeting, I would say that you've got a great plan in place. I really do. But I would like you, I would like to invite you guys to my house on a virtual learning day so you can see that plan in process. I have four children in the virtual learning plan, one school-issued device. Even though I said I needed four, we have one. There's a waitlist. I understand that. But there's security protocols on that child's device that I can't access. I can't email him his slideshow to use his device because of the security protocols. He doesn't have his work assigned on that device because the other kids in his class don't have devices. So that device that the school has given me to help is useless. I've always encouraged my kids not to use tablets, but here, here's a Kindle that I bought in 2014. Guess we're going to do school on it. I don't have a wireless that is strong enough to do four kids on four devices at the same time. I work 50 hours a week. My spouse now works two days a week so that he can help me homeschool the kids. We've got two parents all day long on our virtual days working with four kids on four different devices that may or may not work. If we get it working, the slideshow won't load. Or there's a Seesaw app that tells me my kid has an assignment on there. So I have to log on to the Seesaw app, which shows there isn't an assignment. So I have to email the teacher, who after three days has not emailed me back. Is he going to get marked absent on those assignments? This is just one kid. The videos won't load sometimes. Sometimes they'll send us to a password-protected site without the password. So you email the teacher and ask her the password, and she tells me to restart my device. How does that help with a password-protected device? I'm a nurse. I've been working with COVID since day one in the ICU. I was scared. I get it. I know you guys are scared too. But we have got to go back. You guys are essential, more so than I am, in education. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Pugh. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on Robert Christopher Rice. He wants to talk about reentry, and he lives in Lexington, and he has a child at Pillion High School. Mr. Rice?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board, and District Staff for just giving me the opportunity to speak before you. We are all in unprecedented times, and I think we've heard from tonight that we're all suffering. Everybody is suffering in some type of way. And so I want to be one of the first people to just thank everybody who's been involved with this effort ever since March, whether it's the Board, the District Staff, the school staff, the teachers, for your hard work and your time and your effort that you put in. I don't think that should be taken lightly, because even though you've put in all that hard work, you're suffering also, but you're still putting in that hard work. But what I do want to do is I want to urge the Board and also the District to continue to consider the feedback that you're getting, like you're hearing tonight, like you're getting from emails. Consider the feedback from the parents, the teachers, and the community leaders, whether it's face-to-face or whether it's hybrid. And do your best to be objective and not just decide based on how you feel is one way or the other. There are always two sides to a coin. And I think we have to make sure we're looking at both sides and trying to make the best objective decision that we can. Also, I recommend that we take advantage of the learnings that maybe some of the other school districts that started for face-to-face. I mean, I know like Batesburg-Leesville has K through five going face-to-face. I mean, I know like Batesburg-Leesville has K through five going face-to-face now. So maybe we can glean some information from them in terms of how's that working for them. I guess of all things that I would say, I want to encourage the District not to make decisions in a vacuum. One of the worst things we can do right now is make a, a decision in a vacuum without the input and without the feedback. So I know it's a tough decision, I know y'all have tough decisions. No, I mean, it's, it's what I call a third, a third, a third. No matter what decision you make, a third will be in favor, a third will be against it and a third will be somewhere in the middle. And they may sway from one side to the other. But I think we just need to have grace towards each other, we need to communicate with each other and not make those decisions in a vacuum. I advise the District, I know this is kind of more of a district decision, but District, please listen to your Board Members. Your Board Members are being bombarded with emails and phone calls and Facebook messages and everything, so they're, they're basically getting grassroots information from the field. So Board Members, please speak up and tell the District what you're hearing. And I think what we've got to do is have the Board and the District partner together and make the best decision. And my last and final point is whatever we're deciding, whatever we're discussing, the data we're looking at, everything we're talking about as a District, as a Board, communicate, communicate, communicate. If there's one thing you can do during these uncertain times where everybody is suffering, the best thing you can do is over-communicate. Communicate so people know what's going on, what's being considered and what are the thoughts that are going into the decisions before the decisions are made. So communicate, communicate, communicate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board? You, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, you're welcome to leave, we probably have a good bit left, so, but if you want to step out, that's fine, we don't mind at all. And we really thank all of you for coming and sharing with us tonight, we appreciate hearing from everybody.